Because he
Eh, ki bulela kahore, zadin zadin katsozo oblela kazona. Hasidi loze lohore rebaraka kazona, laylohore reka konahore, riiri fiitisai seki kisabulela kabakala kore. Eh, inka eua kore taba, eh, nako, retofelwa kenakoka honale bat sanze badire dizwe.
The members of parliament, yeah, they're taking notes on all the issues that there's there's seven various committees in parliament.
Honale maloko apalamente alintemu, baylohore ba du la modi komitinsa fapanimsa parlamente. Bay mki ka eua kahaku, libonaba trafika bay fiitisesa komitinsa bonasa parlamente.
Yeah, so if there's some things we want to raise outside this process amendment bill, will request her to see members of parliament immediately we finish.
Eh, biyano eh, o mudula silo orokopa kahore, kahaylohore honalidin katse lohore haditsama isane letaba eh ya ho feito lohore hamulao. Eh, bo maloko apalamente kor harfeza fa, oya koho omuwa maloko apalamente, ufiyo obat kalo seza kadinkatseu. Bat kadinge buona ba honohore ba di fiitisesa kopé.
That's our request.
Ke, ke, ke onantso eh, eh rekopa koro, okopa nele buona, harfeza eh, kopano eh, okonohore otalo sebo tata ba kahaku ba honohore ba wakufiti seza buona kopé.
Okay, thank you, Galibwakita, buasavu fele, sahufele neki bua kore. Independent because riwanegas, ililojari, javu stigma. Ma, ba twabamobaba kethua lakile, ba twafele sahaya go dependent, hivagala stigma.
Eh, I think a lot of people end up wanting to be independent candidates because of the stigma.
Eh, because abatei community still has, gravo kethuwe, the organizations, eh, what is that say? Community still has, after motana kethuwe, uranadara, takele community, otomari lies.
Because they do not take the community seriously, they do not show any commitment to the community, they relax once they are in office.
Okay, valuable. Mister Matunzi, you can reach that woman with the notes and you circulate to members of parliament who are here, next.
Negu du mesan kuka feela?
I greet you all. Kilewakela, na chunere ituze inhorarele, rikene, singwenya na, eh, according to our electoral amendment bill.
I greet you all, um, thank you very much for the opportunity that has been offered to me.
Na, tahtapsan, tlakbona kota rona, ninalibu tahta, haylo, gimele na li, eh, these things, eh, what called party eh, baybizangwargi new nation movement. Because na, kamukudi ngtingi, wanakating this, eh, our constitution, eh, you know, to amoyana, it was straightforward, they can give them according to the.
Sorry, you are requested to start with your name.
My name is Jasmine Diako, I'm residing at Rowan Fontaine, Ward five.
You can proceed, sir.
Okay, thank you very much, eh, na lekbona kore, let them be given, treat them as party. Because now, all the requirements, they didn't necessarily have to follow it. Because they cannot change it, because now, riveraka kain, kantwe la kahore, at the end of the day, they have to reach the, what call it, the necessary requirement. So, na lekibona kore, because now, they went, eh, called themselves as a new nation movement. And they went there as a, as a collective, so which means that now, let them be granted as a part independent. Let them form themselves as an independent, then granted, Galibwak.
Thanks, next.
Chairperson, he speaks Kosa, we don't have provision for Kosa, I interpret Zulu, but I'll, I'll try to work with him.
Mr. Becker?
Um, the next speaker speaks Kosa, we don't have a provision for Kosa interpretation, but we've got Zulu, so I'll work with him.
Okay, no, thanks, thanks, thanks for, thank you, proceed.
Oh, thanks, Chair. Eh, next onea putinza logen gen, ona wa.
Maybe do, do sit onea because we've got it.
Okay, eh, lo, romba we, pilele, ni tulela umwas, on my side, we kama nguele lefila.
I salute this speaker, my name is Weli Lefila.
Eh, le pile, akontesinga yenza, nasekoto, iboni si, okutino, let, i process, i kubeka, abantu ba engage on this bill.
The bill has been approved by the courts.
Number one, if we are saying abantu be independent, must contest. Na, owa mumbo, nditi, let them go independent bangai as a movement. Because one, they will more accountability to go social movement.
If we're saying independent candidates should be given an opportunity, they should go there as independents, they should not be an organized collective.
And the other one, we are in a, kuliwe, elukulele kilayo.
Yes, another point, we are in a free democratic country.
Omye, nomye, une lungelo, lokun kamba, yo kaza, pambi, libe, nguye, osas kaza, kuli kwezi, kwezi election is desire. Now, let them give a chance okutinaabo as independent, because the political parties, if you check the previous elections, that's got twenty twenty one. One of the parties, even ana, even a mayoral candidate.
Each and everyone has a right, because this is a free democratic country, you look at the previous elections, the recent elections. Some political parties, they had not even nominated or put up a mayoral candidate.
Now, independent, you'll know in kuchimao, yo vote, oh, vote delu tatu ex, oh, kanyo vote delu mamu ex. Now, I'm saying, na, ni, ni tulela umwas, le, le pile, my, my, my kubek.
Now, with this eh, bill, it gives an opportunity, every, we know that you are voting for this gentleman or for this lady, I therefore salute this bill, I endorse it.
Thank you.
Okay, eh, good afternoon, our panelist, our panelist. So, the, ba twati lenkwanone. Eh, nakina, aimos moyeng, the councillor from Ward eleven, Morend West. So, I'm standing here to support my colleague, who was here before. Just to tell you, fela kore, the ANC is in favor of the bill, I submit, thank you.
Thank you. We are now going to take other hands.
Retorza, matoha manhaper?
We've been joined also by honorable Mananiso.
Rafano le honorable Mananiso.
We'll also be joined by honorable Mabala.
Rafano Japel, le motshompechimabala.
I'm trying to say that when I'm reading, you are here, so that I'm not misled, other Mabala.
Motshompechimabala.
And eh, we're joined also by honorable Mnesi.
Rafano le motshompechimnesi.
And we're joined by honorable Lize.
Omohapake motshompechilizia.
Yeah, uduzika guana because, ah, para, eh, tulzaruna zako parliament. Thanks very much, colleagues for joining the portfolio come to former fest, we really appreciate it, you'll assist us to, as a collective in parliament, to interact with the notes.
Kellelebokha homena, kane, horabelena le Rona Fana, kota utsana.
A hand set of hands again.
Rekopa Japel matoha adizwele.
That will make submissions.
Baba ikutano katswele.
Number one. Number two. Number three. Number four at the back. I see some chairs are empty here, it means our people outside, they are coming in, okay, thank you.
Jekopa kora, letlasedi tilo, sedi fopele.
You can start.
Thank you very much. Greetings to everyone, my name is Antonette Shiguan. I would like to make the following submission. As the EFF, we do not, we do not support the bill, because as a country, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from IEC and parliament. Over and above other political challenges it will bring. The bill is not going to strengthen our democracy, instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legislative processes. By people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective, but to themselves. But since the constitutional court has put a position, independent candidates must contest national, national general elections on the following conditions. Number one, the threshold for the nomination of the independent candidates must not be less than twenty thousand. And this must, this must be people who are registered to vote, and the IEC must be able to verify them individually, one by one. Number two. The reasons, the reasons we are saying that the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because of, it is a lower, it is lower, and we are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections, and that will be impossible to effectively administer from an electoral point of view. Number three, the deposit that, the deposit that the independent candidates must pay must be the same as the deposit paid by the political parties. And it must not be refundable, as the inclusion of the independent candidates will come with costs, and people wish to stand should not be taking chances. So that is my submission, we do not support the bill, thank you.
Eh, gimelela, maholo.
Greetings to you all, leadership.
Eh, na, ki Linda Sifile, kitzoko Ward twenty eight, kusimun.
I'm Linda Sifile from Ward twenty eight, Simun.
Eh, akebuwi on behalf of political party.
I'm not representing any political party.
Kibua as a community member.
I'm a community member.
Eh, kai bona pile, eh, na, hayon koto feze.
I can see the bill, but I'm not happy with its contents.
Because the lead councillors, it is now, no year, no gen, hadi retuisega niks.
Because the current councillors are not helping us in any way.
So, I get the word independent candidate, dito retuisega in.
And I also don't know how the independent candidates are going to help us with.
Harri, harinadi, harinadi community meetings?
We don't have community meetings.
And eh, youthi ya soko, haenamisebe.
The youth is unemployed.
So, no howlo iswa, the independent candidate, ya, ke, ke, vale koncent.
So, this addition of independent candidates is really concerning.
Hori, kai botore, hara solaki ma councillor, bo, na, di, di independent candidate, dito rela za in.
I wonder how the independent candidates are not, are going, how are they going to assist us, if even the, the current councillors are not assisting us?
So, na, ponoyanka.
So, my view is.
Jalo kaka, 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 kala loko la community.
As a community member.
Negu na, na, odi madi councillor, asera na leson.
So, I think on top of the councillors that we are currently having.
Why, hosengui bona, le, le, ntena ba, ba cheki, we, ba honohore sebele.
Why, why can't they be scrutinized or be educated in order for them to assist us?
Honalo hosengeya chalate ya ore, ho iswe di, ho iswe di candidate, to wele di elections.
Rather than allowing for independent candidates during elections.
So, chalate eh, etlabe ispendwa for the votes.
So, the money that will be spent on votes, or on voting.
For leadipan pirit, etlabe di sebele.
And the papers that will be used during elections.
Yan kiwa, eh, eh, zezoro, youthi, ibelimisebe.
That money could be used to create employment for the youth.
So, negu ko pare, parliament, eh, ko pare le, konseda re, secha ba, ho feita, di, 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 councillor, candi councillora, li di in.
Please parliament consider the interests of the community.
Retapele.
Because we should be the first people to consider.
Koka senele parliament.
Besides, without the community, there can't be any parliament.
So, kiko pare, konseda re, ntend community za, honali de we, repelan kate mo kara ma ke shinaro.
Please consider the community interest.
So, kiko pare, di chel zazali di sebele san, nachane la, secha ba pi.
The monies that you are using, please consider the interests of the community.
Gali ko pa ba to.
I'm begging you, my elders, thank you.
Thank you, next.
Eh, gimelela, batrom peré, eh, le koko kakare, so, na, bisu la kagi shadraka nyaka, I'm from Carltonville, Kutsu, Extension Three.
Greetings to the leadership, I'm Shandra Kenaka, from Extension Three.
Eh, Ward Three, Kutsu.
Ward Three, Inubukutsu.
Eh, na, I support the bill, kahoba ni, eh, I'm definitely shocked by, by kimi, tabaliko parliamentin, bata kona ko pusha kore, puso, eh, kona kore, direla, nareli, community.
I'm in full support of the bill, because I believe that, um, once the parliament is sitting, they will be in support of our interest to the bill.
So, negu toko re, itu le, 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 na, reli community, ra, na, komanharabendite, reloka, swanne, so, by kimi, I'm definitely sure, that are first.
Therefore, I'm in full support as a community member, hoping for the best from the bill, I thank you.
Next.
Gimelela, batrom peré.
Greetings, good day to all the leadership.
Na, ke, ema fana, ke, Eveline Swartz, from Khale City, O twenty.
My name is Eveline Swartz, from Khale Sewe, Ward eight.
O twenty.
O twenty, so.
Na, ki, kilekase lo, sahore, O twenty secha basa felemo, O twenty, rebola ya kadinsi, wanaba rapeiwa, wanaba zela di founi, zatilile zati, wanaba wapo la mostratin.
I'm here with a big concern on the situation on Ward twenty, particularly issues relating to kids being raped. Uh, some of them, their clothes have been taken away from them, uh, their clothes has been stripped off from them, it's a big concern for me.
Kahona kweye fele, kosa bolue mo otorba, mo O twenty.
It doesn't pass a month without not a single person being killed in Ward twenty, uh, people are just dying like flies.
Kadi fifteen, is that February? Kui la kwa bola mushi mana, ale kahusirele zanganyana.
On the fifteen of February, uh, one young man was killed, um, as he was trying to protect a young lady.
Baba bediba ile ba tunsiwa, ale mo wa, wila rapeiwa, ke bana ba le ten.
Two of them were shot, and the other one was unfortunately raped, um, by ten men.
So, le, mo, montle hadi kolo, mo eskol, mo krukas dop, wanaha ba seifi, because honali di kolete, di zamanzedi, emisa, especially, ba nyana feela, ba sadi, ba zela di founi. Ba shupuwa kadi tunya, rekenela motsehari, moma lapen, horobiwa, kotewa di totu sa ba.
Young ladies are mostly vulnerable, particularly on the school that has been mentioned, uh, it seems like they are actually a big target. Um, that includes, um, our house being robbed, uh, daylight, by gentlemen working around with, um, guns and armed.
Rona, moko bolaing, harina tsirele, zamo maponesanga, rona kahore, maponesa rona, ba reboza kore, haba honohore, tsirele zamo, ba, 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 ba re bola ya.
We lacking confidence, uh, in our police officers, because seemingly, they don't even have, uh, you know, putting effort in protecting us as the community.
Ba cha ba, ba bola ibaro, na ko harre, ba re ba kotsi.
They are most, they are mostly afraid of these, uh, people that are killing in our community, because they claim that they are more dangerous than anyone else.
Karre, na kongo e khaor, uyo koba, si, uya ko police station, iloko ba tuso, na kongo ba kobelela koro, otsamo reke, ganilo, na, o, tunsa nele, ba towa, kapo bolani, le buone.
It's hurting, uh, when we report such issues in our police stations, uh, because our police, very, uh, very police officers, they encouraging us to instead buy guns and retaliate on this, um, uh, gentlemen that are terrorizing the community.
So, arena safety ko krukas dop, omo Khale City, mo O twenty.
So, safety is the biggest issue in our Ward twenty, Khale City.
Galibwakaba.
I thank you very much.
Eh, thank, thanks very much. Eh, we'll ask eh.
Ja, rokopa, motshompechimana miso.
And honorable Mabala.
Le motshompechimabala.
Eh, to interact with eh, eh, the speaker.
Kora banle, lidu buisano le, moyo, fetanrotra ma Mike. Kao roto zekonze, ritokopa, batrom peru, baba welen.
We did not want to stop the mother.
Nisiga me kela loho, zaname kanon.
Thanks very much, we're going to request other hands to talk to the, to this amendment bill. Let's just be clear, that we allowed the mother to be on the podium, because we understood in others, those are other issues that members of parliament, councillors were dealing with in the community.
Rekopa tataro le kabinete, kore di tewela zalan, na, kala ta fopele, le, ne, mo, kama, mo, nyamo la oteo, elen kanya kacheko.
So, we request that, let's focus, but if we identify that's a, a person, she or his outside the agenda item, will be patient, but will do refer.
Raoleka tata, honapi lo dele, kahona lozo amfuteling, kaleba kala, kanya ritlazengkumpienu.
Person, number one. Number two. Number three. Number four. Number five. Number six. Yeah, I think, number seven. Number eight. Yeah, number seven. She's number seven, yes. Number eight. You can join the. We have eight hands so far. Yeah, we can start.
Gimelela.
Okay. Eh, my name is Robin Zavada.
The speaker. The speaker on the floor. Thank you.
Eh, my name is Robin Zavada. Eh, I'm from Ward thirty five, in Mohale City. Eh, I just want to submit that I support the bill. In support of the two speakers, the previous two speakers from the ANC to say, we support the bill. And the, the reason is that eh, in terms of the independent candidate, they must prove eh, to the fact that they, they have a support eh, from the voters eh, that's sim, eh, that's similar to the, the, the organization, the organization, that are contesting eh, the election, in terms of the threshold, and also the threshold on, on issue of voters, and also in terms of the threshold eh, in terms of deposit. So, that's my, my submission eh, to say we, we support the bill, I thank you.
Next.
I greet you all today. Hope you're having a pleasant day by sitting there. So, my name is Tabo Buon, I support the bill in the case of if we have an individual, eh, candidate who's gonna stand for the community, it's gonna be easy for the people to acknowledge and refer their issues to that particular person, because now, if you look at the issue of our, of the politics and the political members, people that are complaining about, these people are not doing anything, sona. But when we have the community member who's playing part, who's been part of the, the, the amendment bill, it's gonna be easy, because people, they can actually relate with that person. And it's gonna be easy for the people to come to that person, because the same person, he knows and understands the issues of the community. So, I supported the amendment bill fully, and I know it will work in the best interest of the community, thank you.
Thank you, next.
Gimelela, maholo.
Greetings to the leadership.
Na li vitoki, muder moro ledi.
My name is Muder Mudumeri.
I'm a ward committee, committee, aku, Ward twenty one.
I'm from the ward committee at Ward twenty one.
Eh, na, akitu buatilo zeringa, tane.
I'm gonna be trying to be short, I'm not gonna mention a lot.
Kina li, probleme ka, Homer face, ya, wana moren fonte.
I've got a problem over the Homer face here in Ranfonte.
Eh, ki leka applya, la, wa na, eh, bed certificate.
I once applied a bed certificate for my child.
Koro ki, eh, vise, asese, alila, dasese, di seja.
I've already did that, when the child was already a year and above.
Then, they said, ki, eh, late registration of bed, because.
I was told that.
Let's protect her.
What? Little osirele zamé.
Yeah, you have an issue with Homer face.
Yeah, of course.
More Ranfonte.
Yes.
Okay. We'll eh, attend to that matter when we finish the meeting.
Okay.
So, you can eh, lies with eh, Edie at the back there.
Otlawo le Edie kumara koma.
Galibwakaba kolo.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Go to that Edie, we'll attend to the matter on your issues.
Okay.
Thank you, next.
Walatala.
Thank you very much, eh, my name is Selina Mumakwe, I'm the ward councillor of Ward five. Firstly, let me welcome you in my ward, and I appreciate the fact that you are here, and eh, I'm standing here in support of the bill. As the African National Congress, we are supporting eh, the PR system, as it talks to issues of diversity, of race, and all of that. And you'd know that eh, the PR approach system has meant that even small parties can form part of, 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 of the PR list. And also in terms of the problematic long-term ballot cost by too many parties, we are having concern in such particular to say that eh, there, there will be a long list of the ballot paper and ethical for us to be able to work around it. And we also believe that in terms of the independence eh, of candidates, eh, that they should compete on the same terms as all other parties. And also in terms of disqualifying or cheating or the misrepresentation, misrepresentation, that no one should be allowed to cheat and to get into the ballot paper, I thank you.
Thank you. Next.
Longo, zanem volatwilo.
May I greet you, my name is Zanem Volatwilo.
Ward thirty.
From Ward thirty.
In Rand West.
In Rand West.
Ni melela paglenda, o supporti bill.
I stand here to support the bill.
But, gunele ngani je, en, eluba. Ni, kome, guni, njongba, se, infumene le chance, routine, di zoma glenda, unte tanga.
But there's this one little thing I would like to submit to you now that I've got this chance to stand before you.
Apemza, in Africa, sine problem, enguluwa kulo.
Here in South Africa, we have a big problem.
Eh, yabando ababiza, ama zamazama.
Of people called zamazama.
Aba sebenza, iskali public.
Those people display and brandish their guns in, in full public.
Lando genogo, indense, as a community member, lisi vendino loi.
And that makes me as a community member to be afraid.
Gobango ndiasbozba, ele kandraga, shigasha, ipega, apuglesimas, begina na.
I ask myself, where is this country going with this current predicament?
Gune nyare, zulileyo, atela, onka ma South Africans, rotima ra hande over iskali ku government.
In the past years, all South Africans were requested and urged to hand over their.
In the past years, all South Africans were requested and urged to hand over their arms to government.
Gotu, ndibwone imichola, kulo nyaropelele, kulo nyawa.
But I saw wonders, I was surprised last year and this year.
Abando besilwa ngeskalema, poise, nbazaba tubula ne helicopter?
We saw people shooting at police to the level that they shot a helicopter.
But in bwana nga ti, umzanzafrika, lo ndele, wa itatene ngabi?
I feel like South Africa has not actually taken a decisive action against that.
Ya itela kaku lo ndele, kela ni tatene ngale, oksuka la namtajé, because the noyiko, obilizel, za obalega zanke.
I humbly request that please make, take some necessary action on that because the country could be shut down.
Thank you very much.
Diabong.
Thank you. Next.
Kalidumedi sakafela, diritola kake, Paul Chabeli?
I greet you all. My name is Paul Chabeli.
From Ward five.
From Ward five?
I'm very much against the bill. As an independent candidate, our political system is a political party system. As an independent, most of the things that we were maybe in parliament, whether provincial or national, of a leisure, osena, the required support, ka proposal, le eutabengweense, because of the party system, meribergisa. So our parliament will end up being bloated ka individuals, zesa felezani, eles, bafelezani, eles, just check collectors because they don't get the necessary support from the parties that were deleting in the parliament. So it's gonna be a waste of money and all other amenities that were in the editor. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next.
Greetings. Greetings all. My name is Zanele Chugulwane, coming from Ward eight, Meri City. My submission will be, I support the bill as presented by the ANC branches. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Next.
Let me extend my greetings to members of parliament and everybody present here. My name is Mahosi Klapiso, the ward councillor of twenty-one. As ANC, we support the bill, the amended bill of rights. We support it because Harish Shababaholo, it caters for diversity and it's non-sexist, it caters for gender, disabled people and so on. I can name all and all and all. Kialebo.
Thank you very much for your submissions on the electoral amendment bill.
Ralabohka tata, kadi chalo talona, ka mulautomo o?
We're inviting another set of hands for submissions.
Ritokoko pa, matshoho amang, baylongkor, basenzen, babadakho tswela?
Number one, you can join the... Number two. Is number three. So these are the three hands that... Okay. Can the security team assist outside if the members want to do, to make submissions? So that we deal with the...
Nerokopa bakhan kaba tsirelezo ba tuise, kware ba kense ba leunkonke, baylongkor babakho, senyadi peto, di chay.
Just get them so that we will negotiate with others, yeah, that they don't want to make submissions. So that we afford all of you the space here. You can start.
Dumeelamba kholu?
Greetings, honorable members.
Libitola ka, kiritumetimereki, kidulamo Ward five?
My name is Ritudumetimereki. I reside in Ward five.
Ki ANC youth member?
I'm a member of the ANC Youth League.
I fully support the PR system that is allowing youths and women. Because it doesn't give, what can I say? The PR system allows, also allows the presentation of women, youths and other groups. However, we do have a concern about the practicalities of some of the proposals currently contained in the bill. We agreed the home affairs committee to consider these challenges carefully as they may cause indirect consequences that can harm our democracy. Kialebo.
Thank you. Next.
I greet you all. I would like to acknowledge all the members of the parliament. My name is Vanelen Vambo. I'm one of the ward committees in Ward two. Personally, I support the bill simply because I feel like there are certain individuals who has misrepresented like political parties. You find that, you tell people about the African National Congress, let me say, and you tell them maybe about the candidate. Because of the previous things, previous people has done, that person will end up like saying they won't vote for the African National Congress because of the previous mistakes. So I fully support the bill. Number two, I feel like it won't work, the issue of the bill won't work. I support it, but I feel as if it won't work simply because of support. Let me say, for instance, if we have independent individuals who will be elected, they won't get all the necessary support. That's how I feel. They won't get the necessary support from other parties. Some of them will even get submissed because of lack of information and everything. Thank you. Can I get a referral? I wanted to address something to one of the members of parliament.
Okay. Who is honorable here? She says one member of the parliament. Can you get honorable here, then she will? Go with him, Mr. Matonsi, is there a secretary of the committee? Thank you. Next.
Hi, good morning. My name is Andre. I'm a pastor here in Tukomzras. I'm from Ward ten, Andre Roberts. I'm a pastor in the community and I support the board hundred percent. We as pastors are so actively involved in the community. When it comes to your political understanding or involvement in the community, we are everywhere. When it comes to your CPF, the pastors are involved. When it comes to social illnesses, your pastors are involved. When it comes to crime prevention, your pastors are involved. I don't just want, if I should go in as an independent, I just don't wanna be part and parcel when it comes to any committee, just to open in prayer or to close in prayer. But during the week, at night, during the day, we're actively involved as pastors in the community. When it comes to decision-making in parliament, the pastors open in prayer, the pastors close in prayer. But we don't form part and parcel of the decision-making when it comes to our members in our churches and that. So if most of our pastors can get the opportunity to go into parliament or go into province and that and we form part and parcel of those decisions, then I think we'll have a better and sound community, a better and sound government at the end of the day. So I support the board hundred percent. God bless. Thanks.
Thank you, thank you. We're taking another set of hands. Number one. Number two, number three. Number four. Number five. Any other hand? Number six. You have noticed that it's on the queue? So, oh ma'am. Yeah, so that they don't skip you. Number five, number six, number seven. Who else? Number eight? Number eight, yes. Yeah, I can start. Thank you.
Di talunbulisa, as members of parliament?
May I greet all the members of parliament?
Di talubulisana, umpara tironke?
Might also greet the commuted large?
Di kamalamnandi, simpyo Ramadwa?
My name is Simpyo Madwa.
Di puma, Ward twenty-nine, Epegerstha?
I'm from Ward twenty-nine in Beggerstha.
Nandi ma apa ndi supporta le bill?
I stand here supporting this bill.
Le bill, izoneka, abantu, abashala, impakati, abazazi, yo inga, kizo impakati?
This bill will empower local and active people who recite within the communities.
Le bill, izoneka, itu ba, abantu, apo, ba, kogoti, ki, party representative, ba vale longa panle, kufakabantu ba ti, le ebekfane, le bangga, akfakwanga boona?
This bill will provide an opportunity where some capable people were excluded by political parties, but this will create a room for those members of the community to emerge.
Le bill, izomeka shawu, kuti, ababaantu, ba wazi, yo, ma dynamics, sa seklali, nin gaboka, nyaba, ni kwa, itu ba, no ba, ma ba mele, umpakati, ba bebe, ketwengo, umpakati, bengazi, ketanga?
Those people will give an opportunity for people who are fully aware of the dynamics and the socio-economic issues affecting our communities. So, community will elect them.
Diabule.
I thank you so much.
Thank you. Next.
I greet you all. My name is Kiamochezwe Marumule. As a PR councillor from Ward twenty-seven in Semonya. As the EFF, we do not support the bill because as a country, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and the parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. This bill is not going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate trade, oversight and the legislative process by people who want to use money to control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidates must contest the national general elections on the following conditions. The threshold for the nomination of independent candidates must not be less than twenty thousand and this must be people who are registered to vote by the IEC, must be able to verify them individually, one by one. I submit.
Thank you. Next.
I greet you all. My name is Councillor Mhoiki Ananosweli. As the EFF, we do not support the bill because as the country, we do not think that we are ready administratively for the bill, both from the IEC and the parliament, over and above other political challenges it will bring. This bill is not going to strengthen our democracy. Instead, it is just going to be used to infiltrate oversight and the legislative process by the people who want to use money, control individuals that are not accountable to a collective but themselves. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidate must not contest national general elections on the following conditions. The reason why I'm saying the threshold must be higher for those wishing to contest is because if it is lower, we are going to have thousands of candidates for provincial and national elections and that will be impossible to efficiently administer an electoral point of view. Those who contest as individuals, independent candidates, and get higher votes than is required to get an award in parliament, must be forfeit the remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity, an option to contest as a political party. I submit.
Thank you. Next. Oh, sorry colleague, they are requesting your name and surname.
Okay.
Sorry, sorry. Wait, that's kala faki kam. Sorry.
Okay. Okay.
So, sorry, they want her to...
My name is Councillor Anosweli Mhoikiana.
Noted. Thank you.
Good morning, leaders, members of parliament. My name is Shimé Ramocha, from Ward fifteen, Jefferson of Saint Raphael branch. I fully support the bill because it is open and transparent and secondly, it will go in line with the constitution of the republic. I submit. Thanks.
Thank you. Next.
I greet you all. My name is Councillor Amabatsuramakan, from Ward fifteen, in Rastan Rand West. As EFF, we are not supporting the bill. But since the Constitutional Court positions that independent must contest national general election under the following conditions. Number one. Those who contest as an individual, independent candidate, and get higher votes than is required to get an award in parliament, must forfeit their remaining votes because they would have been given a clear and equal opportunity, an option to contest as a political party by election to replace independent candidates who either die or resign from parliament. Who either die or resign from parliament or legislature because if such permitted the country, such permitted, the country will permanently will permanently be in elections. So we do not... As EFF, we are not supporting the bill. I submit.
Thank you. Next.
Good day, members of parliament and community members.
Good day, members of parliament and community members.
My name is Betidinte, from ward five, Ratakila branch, deputy secretary. I'm here to, to support the bill, I submit.
Thank you, next. Your turn, next.
Greetings to the leadership and the parliamentary audience. My name is Wazile Momosa. I do support the bill. Because the bill is, I think, the rights of individual to participate in elections. So I'm saying it's their right to participate without affiliated in political parties. Because of those individuals, I believe that they have also the followers who are, who are having their interest or believing in those individuals, so it's their right. But in terms of government, I don't think we are ready for many of individual. Remember, the most of those, those independent candidates are from political parties whereby, caused by the, or whatsoever, I saw it from the ANC on the past elections, but I do support.
Thank you, next.
Good day, how are you? My name is Andy Lebulatmtembo, from the African National Congress. Well, South Africa is structured in a way that if we allow the bill to pass or the bill to go through, the same way it's happening in your, in our local authorities where you find that independent or a number of independent candidates do not or would not be found to account in terms of their policies. And most of them just go there because some are disgruntled from different political parties for whatever may be the reasons. So now the bill will just open a vacuum of disorder and, and leaders who are not accountable to not only their parties but their constituencies. Of course, if our country was structured in terms of discipline in a different form that suggests that when you are in each and every legislature in the province or the country or councils, there would then be a coordination or there would be some form of coordination in terms of how structures do not maybe differ but in terms of how they would want to project their views and policies, then it would make a lot of sense. But now, in a state that we are, you find, or you'd find a, a state where some would just come for the benefit of earning and not because they want to change the status quo. So, I personally, and I think the movement does not support the bill and that we should be partisan, we should stand with our political parties in order for us to then translate these or convert these policies into what will transform us towards the future, thank you.
Thank you. We're inviting another set of hands. Number one. You can join the... Number two. Number three. Number four. Number five. Number six. Number seven. We have seven hands. Any other hand? I'd note that, number eight here. Thank you, can start.
Greetings to everyone. My name is Solomon Mudise. From what, nineteen Muhla King? I am here in support of the bill. There are so many things that are happening in our communities. Secondly, I also want to thank myself. I am also a member of the ward committees. That shows me that as a youth... Our nation, there is something that they need from the parliament. For them to be easier to achieve that. That is why we are now going to be compelled to work with them. That means that I'm going to support this bill and in conclusion... When you have left this place, you must always remember that you have left people who are complaining in their communities. Because we as representatives, when we go back to our communities to give them feedback, to say this is the way we are going, in which we are going to work. In other words, we are going to tell them what you have told us and if you do not give us, if you are not giving us the truth, it means we are going to relay, to convey that to the community and that is going to cause distrust because the community will think that we are lying to them. Thank you.
Thank you, next.
Greetings. My name is Councillor Yunis Matlayla, from ward twenty-eight in Rantos. As the EFF, we don't submit the bill. But since the Constitutional Court has put a position, independent candidate must contest national general election on the following reasons, conditions. Those who contest as individual independent candidate and get higher vote than they required to get, to get a weight, parliament must forfeit their remaining vote because they will have been given clear and equal opportunity and option to contest as a political party, I submit.
Leadership. My name is Sien Letyani. Sien Letyani, the chaplain of Matthew Goniwe branch of the ANC in Muhla King, ward eighteen. I'm standing here in favor of the bill. I'm supporting the bill hundred percent so. My issue is regarding the ward councillors. I've heard people talking about ward councillors. Let us not forget that the ward councillors are servants of the people. Department.